Good morning, the December 16th Special Board Meeting is now in order. I'd like to take the opportunity to remind the public that the appropriate place for public participation in the meeting is during the individual public comment opportunity identified in the agenda. Outside of your individual public comment opportunity, your role in the meeting is to be an observer. Paul, roll call please.
Mr. Susan?
Here.
Ms. Wright?
Here.
Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Jenkins?
Here.
Mr. Trent?
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Please vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're now at public comments during this morning's meeting. Comments will be limited to the agenda items only, I'm assuming because I, wait a minute. We have two public comments. First, can I get a motion to allow all three minutes and the ability to address the board by name?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Please vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No nays. Two. We have three number of speakers and each will receive three minutes. I will call up three speakers, but this is going to be two speakers at a time. The first three speakers are Kelly Curvin and then Michael Dorn. So Kelly Curvin, you have the floor.
Do you want to set up the clock, Mr. Susan?
Yeah, I mean, at this point you're only, there's only a couple of you, so it doesn't matter.
Good morning, everyone. I overheard a little bit of remarks about the ID and naming things. So for the purpose of, my name is Kelly Curvin, I live in Palm Bay, Florida. Ms. Campbell, by address is my representative. My oldest goes to a school represented by Ms. Jenkins, and my youngest goes to a school that would be in Mr. Trent's district. So three out of five of you. Yesterday, I sat in here and listened to all the interviews, just like everybody else did. And when I walked in the door yesterday, I firmly believed that I knew who was going to be picked. And then I left feeling differently. And I felt differently because I felt like Robert Schiller gave a part of the board a Hail Mary, in a way. And what I mean by that is Dr. Rundell is who I genuinely thought was going to be offered this position when I walked in. He is past, has some checkered marks to it. To be fair, I haven't heard any negatives coming out of Pocahontas Junior Senior High School. Maybe a principalship is where he shines the most, but his time in Indian River County has some question marks. However, Mr. Schiller, on the other hand, with his educational consulting background, provides the board a very unique perspective of putting everything together before it's handed off to the permanent. And he flat out said, he wouldn't take a permanent position regardless. So he's not going to fight to stay. Whereas Dr. Rundell would be given the opportunity, who I do firmly believe will be our permanent superintendent. He could finish out his principalship, the media surrounding him will die down, and it gives the public the appearance of, okay, well, maybe the naysayers were wrong, which can go either way. I have a daughter with ESE. In the first grade, she was that little kid who was given the wrong breakfast straw and was hiding under a desk at the start of class. And it was our AP, now current principal at Lockmar, who got on the floor with her and formed a relationship and formed a bond that, the other day she looked at her baby box and there was a shirt that this assistant principal bought her so that they could twin and get through school. And I felt like, listening to the three of them, James Larson came off the most human. He came off four students and four staff and four teachers. His track record showed in Orange County that he can handle a district of our size with our budget. I think he's the best choice. I want to be wrong. I know it sounds paranoid, and I generally am a fact-based person, but I like to see things from all possible perspectives. So I really, really hope that that's who you guys pick. That's all, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Curvin. Michael Dorn?
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak here today. My name is Michael Dorn, I'm a professional safety assurance manager. I work on trains and rail signaling and stuff like that, but I'm here talking about a different kind of safety problem today. I didn't expect to come here until just a few minutes ago, but I'm glad to have the opportunity here to talk about this. I found out yesterday that there was a safety problem at VR Elementary. And I have three kids that go there. They sent one of my kids home, said he was on the playground, there was an incident, where kids are tying each other up with jump ropes, restraining them physically with ropes. Teachers don't even notice this going on. Hasn't even, weren't even aware of it, until after the fact. I heard about this, no, can't be true. Of course the teachers are watching the kids, right? Of course, this is, the kids make up stories. No, I just came from, a few minutes ago, from the principal's office and they corroborated, yes, this has happened, this has happened. There are probably, I have a written report saying that this happened. There are parts of the playground where kids do, they're just not able to supervise them. And this is happening, it's been happening. In fact, I've been doing more research about it, realized that this has actually happened, been going on for months. Apparently, a couple of months ago, there was an incident where a kid got tied up so severely, knotted, the teacher couldn't remove the knot, she had to get, the teacher, Mr. Nagel, had to get scissors and cut the kid out of the ropes. After this happened, months ago, you mean to tell me that they're still able to play with jump ropes on the playground and not have proper supervision? Blew my mind. And then the principal's trying to, oh, whoa, look downplay, they're playing a game, I don't know, it doesn't matter, you're playing a game. You know, the responsible parents, the teachers, the administration has responsibility to watch the kids and supervise them, make sure that the other kids are not tying each other up with jump ropes, for goodness sake. So, I'm here today to advocate on behalf of safety, and who, I don't know which candidates you have to select from, but if one of them in particular has a better background on safety, then I would advocate for that, for kid's safety, I would advocate for that candidate. And of course, of course, there needs to be some kind of training, some kind of announcement, some kind of, I'm glad to have the opportunity to make this speech today, but there needs to be some better control and some better supervision in general, not just at VR Elementary School, but in general. From the top down, needs to be sent a strong message to the staff, to the principals, to the teachers, to the faculty. Watch the kids on the playground, for goodness sakes, and don't let them tie each other up with jump ropes. If you're going to play with ropes at all, then teach them about the safety of ropes. Ropes are very, very dangerous. Of course, everyone here understands that.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. If you get a chance after this meeting, if you're still here, I'll meet with you. Otherwise, I'll, it's my district, so I'll go call.
Okay, very good. I don't know how long a meeting lasts, but I could hang around.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Okay. No, it was just, that concludes the public comments. We thank you for your willingness to address us in this public matter. Today's meeting's to deliberate and select the district's interim superintendent. I'm going to open the floor for conversation. Does anybody wish to speak first, second, third? Anybody want to open up the floor and start discussing? Okay, Ms. Campbell?
So I just want to start off by saying, I was very pleased, considering how fast we moved, and to be quite frank, you know, the negative attention that our district has gotten over the last month, that we had such, that we had some high-quality candidates apply, I think we ended up with the three best finalists, all have vast amounts of experience at many levels, and was, you know, the whole process yesterday, I think, was good. I think that our district can do well with any of the three. I'm just going to say that right up front. I think they're all qualified. I have, I have, I want to say two favorites, because I got to, you know, this is an awkward process, let's just acknowledge right up front, it's an awkward process, we're going to be talking about people, not behind their backs.
Just acknowledges is awkward.
Yeah, let's just acknowledge it, you know, and so I really want to focus rather than, for me, you know, rather than talking about the negatives, anyone can, the positives that caused two of them, at least, to rise above the others. I do think that, interesting as our public commenter mentioned, that Dr. Schiller represents a really unique opportunity. He is the only one who clearly is only, the other two might be interested in the full, in the permanent position, he is clearly only interested in the interim. And he has so much experience in doing what we see that we need to do, which is turning us around, and to be, you know, to be honest again, we have a very young, I don't say young board, but like, yes, we're very young. A very new board, most experienced person only has six years. I've got five, Ms. Jenkins has two, you guys are just starting. He has that experience of working with boards to get them ready to go, right, to move forward. It's almost like we would be getting a twofer, you know, an interim superintendent who has clearly has experience in helping a district move forward, but also experience in training boards, kind of in addition, like our own personal FSBA every day, you know. So I think that is a really...
Free consulting is what you're saying.
Right, right, free consulting, that we're paying for, that we're paying for. I, you know, that kind of energy, and to come from the outside, and I know I emphasized last week, I thought we needed internal candidate, honestly, and even though Dr. Rundell's the internal candidate, I, you know, that's kind of a bounce. Is he internal candidate? Yes, he's from BPS, but he's not completely, because he's had experience outside the district. But when I was thinking of internal candidate, I was thinking like a cabinet-level position, clearly none of them applied, because they already know the inner workings and it would be smoother. But since that didn't happen, to me, this is a really good opportunity to, to really get that, get the ship turned right, work with us. You know, I think he has, I'd honestly say, I think all, you know, he has opportunity to, the ability to stay neutral when it comes to politics. If he's worked in LA, and he's worked in Houston, and he's worked in some of these other places, he's been able to do that. And, you know, the letters of recommendation, I don't know if you guys were able to look through, I mean, he's continued to be sought after, to do the very thing that we are wanting to do, and I think would really set us up well for whoever we choose. That being said, that being said, I was really excited about Dr. Larson. I think that, you know, even though he hasn't been a superintendent, and I have the three, he's not been a superintendent, to be an area superintendent in Orange, you know, which is the size of a small country, you know, really gives him, and because of the positions he served in that, he's got a vast amount of experience also, including some significant time overseeing discipline for Orange County. And, you know, we're not unaware, Orange County is in some ways similar, as far as, you know, we're all here in central Florida, but in some ways, you know, even more challenging, because they do have even more schools that are high-needs, you know, free and reduced lunch rates, and all those kinds of things. They have unique challenges of inner-city, which we don't necessarily have here in Brevard. And so that kind of experience, you know, and the energy that he brings, the passion that he brings, I don't think any of them were not passionate, but I was really excited about that. The ability to just engage with the staff, engage with the community, that was exciting to me. Not that Dr. Rundell could not do those things, I do, for me, I'm just going to just put this out there, because like, we have to have this awkward conversation out in the public, I do like the consistency of staying in one place for a good amount of time, that you can kind of build that practice and get to touch so many things. You know, clearly, Dr. Schiller has not been doing that for the last several years, but I think his, his role is different, because he is, that is, I mean, you know, he's in retirement time, and so his whole focus has been on helping districts turn around. So I see him, view him a little bit differently in that, not staying in one place at any given time, because he was intentional about that. So I, you know, I'm not, those are, those are my two, and they're very different, and I honestly, through the night, have not been able to really settle on one of those as a, my number one, but, you know, they're tied for number one and two for me.
Ms. Jenkins?
No, I'm not ready.
Do I?
I'll jump in there. I think that we are very lucky, we did get three highly-qualified candidates, and they're very unique and different. So I think that was one of the really cool things to see yesterday, from my perspective. What I, what I walked away from yesterday is that we are hiring for an interim superintendent. That is what we have been advertising, that is what we are looking for, with the understanding we are going to go to look for a full-time superintendent. I think, I think Mr. Schiller brings a unique, I do think he brings a unique opportunity for us, because he does have that history of turning districts around. He doesn't want full-time, he's not looking to stay here, he's looking to help us get on the right track. And then I think that the other part that's good is that when we go to advertise for the permanent superintendent, people may not be willing to throw their name in if they know that one of our, the other two candidates expressed the fact that they are looking for a permanent superintendent position. So I think that that is something that could hinder us on getting all the best candidates that are going to throw their name in the hat, so to speak. Plus, his experience is extensive. I will say for Dr. Rundell, he offers a level of stability, though. So that is one of the perks that he has, coming from a BPS culture, that he understands what's going on, he understands how these policies that we have in place are affecting the schools, because he's there. So for the comfort level, I think he brings that benefit. And then when you look at Dr. Larson, that's why I said, these are all great options, they really are. Dr. Larson, I liked, I liked what Ms. Curvin said when she said he was the most human, and I agree, I mean, you could connect with him, he's got a lot of experience, too. I just keep going back to the fact that we are hiring for an interim superintendent, and I think that we should make our decision based on who is the best interim superintendent, not who is the best long-term superintendent. So for that reason, for me, it would be Mr. Schiller that would rise to the top, because of the fact that we're looking for interim. All three candidates were excellent, they, I don't think we would go wrong with, with any one of them, they would all be able to do the job. But focusing on that interim aspect of it, I think he is the one that provides our district with the best, the best direction on being able to straighten out some stuff and get us set up for, for the next superintendent that's going to come in.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Ms. Jenkins, ready to go?
All right, so, I echo the same. We were blessed to have three quality candidates, and I told each and every one of them that our district would be in a better place tomorrow if any of the three at 8:00 AM would be our interim superintendent. Mr. Larson, for example, most human, I do believe he is going to be a superintendent here real soon. We are hiring for an interim, and that would need some experience. And I know he's an area, but that's why Dr. Schiller and Dr. Rundell, who have that experience, immediately rose to the top there. But honestly, I had the best teacher conversation with Mr. Larson. He's going to be, he'll be somewhere really soon, and he'll do a fine job. We had talked about as a board that if we could find somebody internal, that would be wonderful, and we have someone internal, and that would be Dr. Rundell. Even as an interim, you know, it's, you say it's a safe pick or comfortable pick, and it's, it is true. You know, he's taught in the, in the south, he was a principal in the north, in the central, arguably the best non-choice high school in Brevard. I mean, his numbers from Indian River County, as far as results, it's there, but as, as an interim, you know, I don't believe our district is in such situation that Dr. Schiller's expertise would even be needed. He's, he's an expert at rebuilding districts, and I don't think that's where we're at. I mean, if you've ever been over-qualified for a position, it's obviously him. It's amazing, the amount of experience we would have there. I mean, he had, he had mentioned that our county had tanked. I don't believe we're at that point, I don't think we're waving a white flag, saying that we would, we would need to be built up from the ground, which he has experience in doing that. This would be an easy transition to move to someone that already knows the stakeholders involved, the local, and if, if we did not select someone such as Dr. Rundell for the permanent, it would be an easy transition for him to go back to where he was, and he's lending his years of experience in service to our district. And he didn't have to do that. This isn't someone that's going to go out and try to be, try to be a superintendent at another county. He is going to retire in Brevard County. And that just, I believe it just sends a message that I don't want to be a part of, is that when we are faced with an open position, be it a assistant principal and principalship, that we constantly look outside the district. And that's what's been happening, in my opinion, in some of our administrator, administration, administrative jobs, that we've been questioning our bench. Where's, where's our young leaders of our new assistant principals and deans and principals? And it has, it has come off with an appearance around the district. Guys, I'm the one that's fresh out of the schools, that too many of our new positions have been outside the county, outside the state, and, not that we're looking for a babysitter for a few months, but, jeez, if we can't look inside our own county and pick someone that obviously is the most qualified person that we have in Brevard at this point, with the superintendent and deputy superintendent, and his experience on budget and HR position, obviously, our talented Dr. Thedy leaving, you know, Dr. Rundell seemed to be, in my eyes, the obvious choice. If this place was burned to the ground, I would be calling Dr. Schiller in a heartbeat. But I just don't believe our district is there, and I don't believe we would be headed in the right direction moving forward if we did not select Dr. Rundell.
Ms. Jenkins?
All right. Bear with me, because I'm assuming this is like the only time we're talking, and I'm...
No, we can go back.
Okay, well, I'm going to be honest, I'm like, all over the place, so, bear with me, giving you a heads up here. If I'm being perfectly blunt off the get-go, this train has been moving at high pace, has been coming off the rails, the wind is pushing it back on the rails as much as possible. It's hard for me to feel genuinely confident about any decision today, if I'm being perfectly honest. I'm going to say that, I've thought a lot about this, I'm not, I'm going to go into my picks, but, and my whys, but I'm going to talk it out loud with you, because I genuinely did not come in today with a, this is the, this is the decision I'm coming to the table with today, which is why I wanted to go last, because we can't talk about it afterwards. And it's a really weird process to spend an entire day interviewing three candidates and not be able to talk about it with somebody else who went through that experience with them. Also, we never got to discuss what happened in our one-on-ones, which probably were all unique experiences for each and every one of us. So, I apologize for the rambling, but bear with me here. All right, where do I begin? So I thought about yesterday's group interview, and I felt like, well, first and foremost, thank you to the three candidates for being here yesterday. Yes, Katie, this is incredibly awkward. All are fine human beings, and I appreciate them, and I don't, I hate that this is like a public forum. So I thought about the three candidates, and I, and I tried to like quickly categorize them in my mind, and so I feel like we had one who was energetic and hopeful and passionate, and we had one that was, and I literally wrote this down, like, because I've been literally thinking about this since we left yesterday, I feel like we have one that's practical and realistic and in the moment right now. And if I'm being honest, you know, the other one, I guess I would use the word comfortable? I'm not comfortable, but I acknowledge some people are. But I also felt like there was a little bit of a negative feeling in terms of the district from that group interview. I also was hopeful, like Ms. Campbell, for an internal candidate for this position, but I was also thinking someone who is at a cabinet position, somebody who will quickly jump into the ranks, understand the day-to-day of that operation side, their colleagues stabilize the cabinet that's hanging on by a thread at this point, with two vacancies in the near future. That was an internal candidate that I was thinking would rise to the rank. Even if I thought it was the best candidate, I can't rationalize removing someone as a leadership position in our district, creating a new problem within our district at this time of the year. We would then have a vacancy at a junior-senior high school with the beginning of a second semester starting, when all of the testing begins, just got a new testing coordinator, no less. I just don't think that that's the right thing to do, I think we're going to, we're going to create more problems by attempting to solve problems. The thing that's hard for me is the comfort that people are feeling, I have to be honest about why I don't feel that way. And I was very open and honest in my one-on-ones with every single candidate. To be, I said to the one that honestly wasn't at the top of my list, point-blank in the beginning, I'm going to ask you uncomfortable questions, because if I don't, I'm not giving you a fair shake, because I'm going to leave this room with some kind of judgment or thought that I might have had, and I need to give you the opportunity to be able to speak for that. And so I asked tough questions, mostly forthcoming answers, which was pleasant to hear, but they still weren't answers I was comfortable with. You know, one of the questions I asked all the candidates was about, in any role that you were in in the past, you know, what was something you were shown that maybe you could develop or have some personal growth in? And that answer, that answer just didn't sit well with me, because when you make such a hard decision to leave a district from such an important role, I find it hard to believe that you can't remember the negatives, or be prepared to answer why that's no longer a thing. That was hard for me. That was hard for me to see, like, the growth there. And again, I asked again in the one-on-one, because I wanted to give that opportunity, because I understand this is an awkward setting to sit in this room. And he was a little, little more open and forthcoming, I'm not, I'm not going to say that he wasn't, but I was a little, I was a little uncomfortable with that. Mr. Larson was my top pick on paper, when, before they even came in, acknowledged that. I was even more impressed when he came in here and spoke. I feel like a lot of times, sometimes resumes sound really good, and they're filled with all of these amazing experiences, but then sometimes it just doesn't match, match the person. There's no really validity behind the actions and positions that they've held. I feel like he was that. I believed that he served those roles because he wanted to serve those roles. He was human. He was human, I like, I like that somebody said that. He gives me the confidence that he would be able to successfully portray this district in a positive light, not only to the community, but also to our very fragile cabinet members and employees at the district level right now, which would hopefully then trickle down into the, into the schools. I like that he has a diverse experience when it comes to population. I like that he's kind of touched a little bit of everything. I think he was the one, and if he wasn't, I apologize. I think he was the one that he had a very, he said, "I had a very linear trajectory in my career, but I also had a lateral one." And I respect that, because like Ms. Campbell said, it's, it shows that consistency. If you're able to stay with a district that long, but also kind of navigate through it to stay fresh and new and challenge yourself with new experiences, that's something I can absolutely appreciate. But then I have this other, this other thought process. I was one of the ones who argued, "No, our interim absolutely needs to be able to apply for the full-time position." I'm one of the ones who thought, "That doesn't make any sense." Because, to be fair, my thought process was if our best internal candidate applied for that position, then that best internal candidate, who would be the best to carry us through this, this interim, should have had the opportunity to apply for, for full term. That's really where my mindset was. But that's not where we are. None of them, none of those people that I thought would apply, applied. Mr. Schiller made a really good case as to why it might be important to have someone in this position who isn't seeking the full term. Not only here in this room, but I, I do want to share with you guys some of the things he said to me in my one-on-one that, that really put me in the place I am right now, why I'm just confused. Again, this is awkward, but I'm, I'm gonna tell it like it is. One of the first things he said to me, and it wasn't in a judgment way, it was very neutral, like he was in this board room, was, "Listen, you guys made a major mistake in the timing and the way in which the superintendent was fired. And it wasn't based on simply emotion and, and respect for that individual, it was based on practicality. Here we are rushed to make this decision because we've got holiday break coming up and winter break coming up. And we looked at contracts for searching for the full-time superintendent that said four to six months. But in all honesty, we shouldn't really be finding anyone until the summertime, because most school districts in America, if we're gonna go nationwide, don't end in May. And the likelihood of a candidate willing to just jump ship from a, from probably a very good position in a place they've been very long, in the middle of the most critical times of their school district, if we're looking at educational backgrounds, is kind of slim, or rare, or also makes you question their ability to want to stay and be dedicated to a certain area. Having them come in around June summertime gives them the opportunity over the summer to acclimate, to set a plan, to get out in the community, to start making relationships with administrator, administrators, and then start the new year off fresh. Kind of like a, "We're in this together, we're all new, let's do this." And I, I agree with that mindset, and I appreciate him being blunt about it. The next thing that motivated me in my one-on-one was, he said, "Listen, my number one priority would be your cabinet." And I don't, I don't, I don't want to give away exactly what he said to me. He said, "The first thing I would do is sit down with each and every single one of those cabinet members, get to know them, get to know their why of why they're here, and ensure that they feel secure right now while I'm here as just the interim. My goal would be to make sure they're hanging on at least for that six months with me, and let them know they've got a team player, to, in order to ensure we have stabilization in this district. We can't lose any more people in those top positions. We just can't. We just can't." And, and I love that he acknowledged that himself. I love that he literally admitted, "That is, that's gonna be my number one priority." And then he said to me, and I don't know if he said it to you guys, he kind of made it sound like he did, but I don't know, because as you saw, he was very conversational, so it was kind of just like a natural back and forth. But he said to me, "You have to think about the fact that you have to go to the public now. You know, the public saw what happened, the public had a response to what happened, your community, your leaders, your nonprofit organizations, your businesses, they're, they were watching you. So they're watching you right now in this decision, and this is one of the most critical decisions we're gonna be making as this new board together, because this could right the ship, or stabilize the ship." And he said, "How are you going to feel comfortable justifying your decision?" And what I took from that was, we got rid of a man that obviously I felt like had no business being fired. His evaluations were exceptional, the community relations were exceptional, the businesses, the nonprofits, the schools, the administrators, even our teachers were shook by that decision. And how do I then say, how do I advocate for someone who may not live up to that? Someone who may have already had that opportunity somewhere else that I can point to results of? Or somebody that I just genuinely don't know, because they weren't in that role at all before? I don't have the valuations or results to even point to. And when he said that to me, I thought, "You're right. You're completely right. This moment right now is to, the primary focus is to stabilize this district, to carry us to the end of the school year. There have been some grave missteps and bad decisions to get us where we are right now, and, and my personal concern and priority is our cabinet. That is my personal concern." And I, and I said that the day that we talked about getting rid of Dr. Mullins, and my predictions came true. And I'm really scared, because I've got other ones. I'm really scared that that's gonna continue to happen, and I don't know how we move, move forward as a district if we have all these vacancies in all these really significant places. I'm with Ms. Campbell in the fact of, you know, this guy has a wealth of experience, he's upfront about not wanting the, the, the long-term position, so really, he's gonna come in here to, to guide us, to hold hands of certain staff members, and, and to hold our hands, honestly. I mean, in my one-on-one, I mean, he was super blunt. I mean, he's gonna tell it like it is. He's gonna do what we tell him to do, because we're his boss. But he's going to advise us why, why that may not be the best idea, or situations in which he's seen this play out before, and why, you know, why maybe we should think twice. And I think that's, I think that's important. And when we say that he's overqualified and we don't need to rebuild, I, I just, I actually disagree so deeply on that one. And I also make the argument that one of the candidates kind of painted that picture for us as well, that we aren't where we used to be. And so I feel like those are two conflicting arguments. I do think we need to rebuild in many areas. And it's not because of the performance of our staff members, they're incredible, or the performance of our students. But man, there are fractures in this community and in this organization that absolutely need to be healed and, and/or rebuilt. And so I apologize for ranting, I warned you, because I, I really am trying to figure this out myself, because I feel, I feel positively about two people. I am fearful to get rid of this bright human who's worked in ESE and diverse populations, but also managing a billion-dollar budget of ESER funds. I mean, the, the likelihood of us getting candidates who even comprehend that kind of a budget is kind of slim as well. And so I'm nervous to let them go, but I understand they can reapply for the full-time position as well. So, I asked to go last because I really wanted to have that, I wanted to hear everyone else's perspectives. If I'm being honest now, after thinking out loud with all of you and verbal diarrhea-ing right now, I think my gut is slightly ticking towards Mr. Schiller a little bit more. I think that that's the right choice for our district at this point, to focus in a small step, tiny, tiny timeframe, not worry about the, the long-term picture right now, worry about getting through this tumultuous time, and then figuring that out when things die down a little bit. And honestly, everyone can reapply for the position as well, because, I mean, I heard that, I heard that, that public comment as well. I mean, I don't necessarily disagree with that, what was said. So, okay, I'm sorry, I'm done.
Jenkins, I think you made some great points. Thank you so much for taking the time. It didn't sound really that bad. I think it was okay. I think you did a good job. I, I come from a different perspective than many of you guys do. This is my fifth superintendent in this school district that I've been a part of. Dr. Depatry started it off in 2005 when I was a teacher, and we moved through, and this would be the fifth change. I was a nine-year teacher. I sat on the half-cent sales tax review committee, and as a board member, I've been here for six years, so inwards of seventeen years I've been a part of or moved around this district between, you know, I just, my thing is, is that I, I've seen a lot of things from when I was a coach, and we had a booster club. You would, I coached for many years, and we'd see the transition of many of the booster clubs and stuff like that. And you want to talk about some fighting going on, right? I've seen principals come in and have new principals into areas. I've seen a lot of transition take place. And one of the things people look immediately towards is towards their qualifications, which is where we all want to go, very good qualifications. What is it that makes them the next best leader? And one of the things that we fall on, that we don't do very well, and it's not anybody's fault, but it's the transition and how they will collaborate with staff and tie in with staff, and how does their two styles work, and how do all those other pieces do? Because I've seen it where we have the best coach in the world comes in, and it doesn't work with the actual staff, so what ends up happening is, is you have a brat, right? Okay. So, one of the things that I run into is, is that as many of those superintendents have come through, I can tell you absolutely the most positive and absolutely the most negative of every one of them. I will also say that the majority of them were all selected during the year, like, and that there are six other school districts that are going out to decide right now that are right now going to be choosing right during the year. So the applicant pool process, depending on who throws their name in where, if we are to wait until the end of that, this is just a reminder, that makes it very dangerous for us in the fact that we may not get the best person that may want to come in. So, there's that. I also heard some of the conversation wrapped around, you know, each one of them and what they've done. I couldn't agree with you more. I think Mr. Wright has literally turned around entire states. He's done all those things, right? And he's done it in very good areas. And one of the things we didn't focus on yesterday, that I feel is probably gonna become in the, in the month of January, our number one target, is how we deal with the lowest socioeconomic and diverse, you know what I mean, achievement levels. And when I looked at that, Mr. Wright has some deliverables...
You mean Schiller?
I mean, I'm sorry, Schiller.
Who are you talking about right now?
Sorry, I'm looking at your name on my board. But Mr. Schiller had all of that, and Mr. Larson had some of it too, because he talked about the nine schools and the eleven. But there was one thing that I saw on Rendell's paper, was that if you saw that number, and it just jumped out to me, graduation for black students increased from sixty-five to eighty-two percent. And he's got some other stuff in there. So I could say that pretty much all of them have the same qualifications one way or the other, some have had more experiences in areas, some have had less. I think that each one of them could qualify to, to argue that they're the best in those areas. The one area that I, that I kept coming back to was how are they gonna come in, in the short amount of time that we have, set a direction, understand everybody that's inside of this county, and then move forward with an agenda that we decide that we want to move for? And I think that a lot of that has to come from a homegrown candidate. Now, I from the beginning said that if we are gonna, if we are gonna make a, a pitch to, to say that we keep this as interim, and they could apply as the other one, but like, I didn't want the interim to apply for the superintendentship just because of what has been said here and everything else. I have always thought that whoever is the interim would stay that way, and then we would apply outside to draw in the best talent. I always thought that. But when I look at all three candidates, my, my three is Rendell, Wright, and Larson, and it's not...
Who is right?
I'm sorry, Schiller. I keep saying that. I gotta, let me get rid of this, hang on, Schiller. So Schiller would be second, Larson would be third, and Rendell would be first. And the main reason is, is that I can point to many different areas where they all have achieved in many of the composites that we look at, they all presented very well. The difference is, is that Rendell is here, he came from a county that's right below us, he understands the dynamic where you may have this theory, this process in this, but actually making it come to fruition becomes very difficult because of the, the culture that surrounds it. And I think that knowing the culture is as big of a component as a resume too, and he had that also. So those were mine, that's all. Anybody else want to go? We're gonna move around a little bit. Yeah, Ms. Campbell?
So, I just, you know, just kind of thinking about, about through, I was good, even, even for me to go first, you know, I don't mind going first, but it's, it's also good for me to hear from everybody else, because honestly, because I told you I had the top two, and I, kind of what was gonna help me was what is everybody else thinking about, who are comfortable with working? Because even, it's not just who I'm comfortable working with, even though I could work with any of them, it's who are, you know, all comfortable working with. You know, I, I, Megan kind of reiterated, excuse me, Ms. Wright reiterated something that, you know, that this, this interim we really need, and they all talked about healing, they all talked about fractures. I think they almost, I think every single one of them used those, those words in some way. Honestly, you know, I, Mr. Trent, I'm gonna challenge something you said, because you said the perception out there is we're always looking outside. I have much more often, I don't know that I've ever heard that, actually. What I have very frequently heard is that we are always looking internal and not thinking outside the box. And right now, and I would also challenge the, and not just a direct challenge to you, but about the overqualified, you know what, Brevard is the tenth-largest district in this state. And you know what? We deserve someone who's overqualified. I'm not, I'm not, can't buy into that one, because honestly, you know, we even had, and Ms. Jenkins actually mentioned it, you know, we even had a candidate sit there and say, and talk about our missteps. And I think we need somebody that the community can, that will be uniting to our community, even if they're an outsider, nobody knows them. There is a downside of, of someone, you know, being, I think we've already seen some disunity. I think, I think that we can have one of these, you know, honestly, I'm, I'm just gonna, because I was, I had those two, and I'm clearly, everybody's got great respect for Dr. Larson, but it looks like he's not rising to the top enough, I'm gonna just throw all my chips in onto the side of Dr. Schiller, because I, you know, I think that, I think that for all the reasons I've already said, his great expertise, his ability to get boards to work together, and we have got to work together. And while I have to applaud us, because ever, this week, board, we've done really well. We're all laughing, because we know it's true.
I don't think it was the whole week even, I think you're being timed.
Well, I think we've, I think we've, I think we've done well this week. I think, I think we're, we're, but we're so far from rowing in the same stream. We've got a lot of controversial issues coming up in the near future. We just talked about, even though we may not be, we're not, well, not Baltimore. We're, we're not a hot mess like Baltimore. But we did just have a meeting with our community last Thursday, that now the whole nation has turned their attention to us, that says, "Oh yeah, we are a hot mess." I think that was a mischaracterization of our district, a great mischaracterization. I think we did our district a disservice in that. But we clearly have problems. And I don't think that interim is gonna be able to come and solve all of our problems, but I think an interim like Dr. Schiller will help us to focus on what do we need to do first? And, and he didn't come, and he made very clear together and in our one-on-ones, that that's not gonna be, he has a plan that he does with other districts, and he's gonna come and do that plan and tell us you're gonna do this, this, and this. He's got the plan to come and work with the board and help us figure out what our priorities are. He's got expertise in that. And so, and also, I have to say, I was greatly impressed with the amount of research that he had already done before he ever walked in the door. He had seen our, our budgets, which are not small, our strategic plan, which is not small, and I don't even know if the two new members have taken a look at it. It's, and honestly, I was disappointed, actually, that our first candidate wonder, had some questions about the strategic plan, and some questions about the CAFR, and I'm like, "Yes, we have a CAFR, of course we have a CAFR." I mean, why, but, and I understand why they wouldn't, because, you know, if you're in the district, you're doing, you've got your head down, you're doing a great job at your own school. But if you, you know, even Dr. Larson mentioned, he'd already done some research too, in about a twenty-four-hour period, gone and looked at everything that we had online. a twenty-four-hour period, gone and looked at everything that we had online. So I, you know, the amount of research to art, to be familiar, to, to jump in there, that's the way that Dr. Schiller operates. He's gonna know, he already said, he wants to jump in. I mean, if we make this decision today, even though we're not gonna vote on a contract, and, and pick him, even though we wouldn't vote on a contract for any of them until next Tuesday, I guarantee you, he's gonna be on the phone with people this afternoon, getting a, you know, getting a, a running start. So, so I just, I think he would be a stabilizing influence, and when you talk about, Mr. Susan talked about who collaborates best, I heard that again and again and again, the collaboration. And he knows how to do it. He knows how to do, he knows how to unify people. So, after having heard everybody, I just, you know, because I did have that pie, I, I truly hope, and I'm, I hope the doctor, if they're listening, Dr. Larson hears me say this, I hope that he will apply. But I agree, Mr. Trent, he is gonna be a superintendent somewhere, probably in the state of Florida, in the next eight to nine months. I have no doubt. He's, he is, he's an exciting candidate, and I, you know, even if, if he's not here with us, I hope that he would, would apply, because I think he's very highly qualified and would do a good job for Brevard. But maybe this is just a stepping stone for him to, in the process, and I wish him, you know, wherever he ends up, the best. But I, I do think that Dr. Schiller would be really good.
I'll go and ask, or unless, you want to go?
Go ahead, Jenkins.
I just, I feel bad that I went last.
I usually look to who has their hand on the thing, is what it is.
No, it's fine.
It doesn't matter.
Go ahead, Ms. Jenkins.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Katie, I appreciate you bringing out, bringing out the strategic plan and the CAFER thing, because, again, this is awkward. Like, I don't want to sit here and like, talk about the negative of, of an experience so much. But honestly, that was one of the things that was most uncomfortable with me, is, you know, we talk about, we say things like we want a homegrown candidate. But I argue, we had one. We had a man with twenty-nine years' experience in Brevard Public Schools, and we let him go. And that candidate isn't necessarily a homegrown candidate, because his resume shows him moving around, and there's nothing wrong with that. But that argument isn't really justifiable. So, that one candidate, I would have expected it to be more focused on Brevard Public Schools. Instead of a binder of the strategic plan of Indian River, I would have expected to see our strategic plan and his school's strategic plan, and how those are tied together, and the advances he's made within his school with that strategic plan. That would have made a little bit more sense to me. Not being aware of the things that we were already doing in the district concerned me as well. Does that maybe say, yeah, we need to communicate it a little bit better? Yeah, sure. But also, if you're applying for this position and you're here, I would hope that you would be more aware. I mean, you're in a leadership position too. It's a little bit different. So that, that concerned me a little bit. You made me laugh about Mr. Schiller not getting a contract signed until Tuesday, but yeah, I agree. I think five minutes after a decision is made, he'll be on the phone, probably calling Dr. Duddy. So, I agree, we deserve someone overqualified. We deserve somebody who is very strategic and focused. We're the tenth-largest school district in the state of Florida, but we're also finding forty-ninth in the nation. I have grave concerns about one of, one of the candidates. I have grave concerns about the integrity of the process, and I'm doing my best to not speak about them if I don't have to. But it's frustrating to hear things being said. I care so deeply about this position and this district. I care so deeply. I am very uncomfortable, very disturbed by everything that has happened in the past month for this district. I am deeply, deeply concerned. And I, I again said the one thing that Mr. Schiller said. This is one of the most critical decisions your board is going to be making after the month that has happened. And I, I agree with him wholeheartedly. I really, really do. I think the most strategic and the most beneficial decision we can make right now is to put someone in place like Mr. Schiller, to temper everything that's happening within our organization and outside of it. As much as I like Dr. Larson as well, I hope he reapplies for the full-time, I really do. One of my reservations, and why I was on the fence, was like, he excites me, I feel like he's an amazing candidate, I think, I'm a little scared he will get taken away by somebody else and may not be here to apply for that. But I also don't feel wholeheartedly in my heart, that if, even if he was nominated to get this interim, that he could even be successful right now in the climate that we have, in the timing of the year. I would be nervous that that would be setting him up for failure. Because I don't know if he would be given the time and the resources, and honestly, the staff, to be successful. And so I think someone who knows how to manage those crisis situations would be the best decision for us. I don't really play poker too often, Ms. Campbell, but I, and I know you really don't either, but I think, after having this discussion, I, I think I feel comfortable putting all my chips in, in Mr. Schiller's basket as well.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins.
Did I? I don't know. See, I told you I don't play. My chips in the basket.
All right, so... Mr. Susan, how many counties are up for?
Six.
There's six. It seems like one of the candidates, it's just an easy decision, make all of us feel fine. The community will get off our backs for making tough decisions, but we signed up for this to make tough decisions, and I'm not gonna stop now to just say, yeah, that's, that feels good, it feels easy, and, and we can make up for maybe some of the decisions some of us didn't like, that we've made up to this point. Even though one of the candidates said that they would like to stay here for the rest of their career, there's six counties looking for someone with the qualifications of all three of those candidates that we had. And it, it is just going to come back at us if we pass up on something that we had here in our own backyard and winds up across the state. This person's not as locked into this area as they once were, because they have no kids in the district anymore, and you can move around. And this is a different time. So, I, I'm, I'm pretty straightforward on some things, but if, if you look at some numbers, and when we have a person that's solely responsible, I mean, that's a superintendent, that the grad rate you already mentioned in Indian River County went from sixty-five percent to eighty-two percent. And for Hispanic students, seventy-nine percent to eighty-eight percent. Let's see, AP and IB enrollment for all students increased from twenty-one to twenty-nine percent, which is important here, AP and IB enrollment for black students, African-American students increased from eight percent to twenty-one percent. AP and IB enrollment for Hispanic students increased from fifteen to twenty-five percent. And it also increased AP/IB enrollment for white students increased twenty-seven to thirty-four percent. This person was also heavily involved in the creation of the Technical College, which was big on the, the campaign trail. We heard that from many people we talked, knocked on their doors, and the community asked for a possible Technical College or something. And we do a great job already, but that's just the expansion of it. Where it said eighty-seven percent of his new employees stated that the employer treats him, treats them fairly. Another district's gonna come knocking at this person's door, and, and he should, yeah, all three of them. And again, I'm not talking about Mr. Larson in this case, because he's, you know, for an interim, he hasn't been that head person yet, and he's gonna be gobbled up, I'm telling you. You know, out of the three conversations, he had the teacher conversation with me, which was wonderful, and Dr. Schiller had the, the life experience conversation, and then they had a conversation of who can, who can lead this district tomorrow. This district, not a district. When I mentioned the overqualified, not overqualified for the position that we currently are in, but he's overqualified, I, I think for a bigger position than this. Not that, that this is not, I mean, if, if five of us walked out tomorrow, because, you know, our, our district was on fire, that's who I would be calling. So I, I don't, I'm not trying to diminish Brevard County in any way. But I'm just afraid, we're gonna look back and, and say, we had something here. When, when Dr. Larson, or Mr. Larson's gone, Dr. Rendell's gone, and we're six months down the road, or eight, whatever it is, I think it can be shorter than that. You know, I don't want to say professional salesman, but Dr. Schiller, he can, he can, he can talk about his experience very well. And, you know, I'm just hoping that's, that isn't just our decision-making there. The more our conversation progressed, on our one-on-ones, I don't want to get too much into those, as, as good a job as he was talking about what he would do here, and in our timing of getting a superintendent, and what we needed to do with the community. He actually was solidifying my decision on the person that I, I thought would be right for that job. We're talking about a person who is familiar with the stakeholders, the community, that already has that, that relationship. And if we're trying to repair anything, you know, bringing someone from the outside has that negative appearance too, is you are so mixed up here in this county, and you gotta bring somebody from the outside. And I don't believe we're at that, that point. I, I just don't. I think we still are one of the best-performing schools, school districts in, in the state, and I'm gonna keep it that way. My fear is, we, we get somebody, such, Dr. Schiller, he comes in here, and I don't want to say waste time, but we, we have work to do. And, and he, we're not building from the ground up. I don't believe, if, if, Mr. Jenkins, if you think our, our cabinet is so strong, and I, you know, we have lots of good people in there, there's just not that, we're not in dire straits to, to, we need to move forward. I know it's an interim position, but we have somebody in our backyard that could seamlessly come in here, connect the community back with, with our board and our, and our staff. And I just, I just, I hope we don't look back at this and say, we had someone here, and we didn't take advantage of his qualifications and, and his willingness to step up and help our district when a time he didn't need to do. That's all.
Am I able to jump in there? Okay. Okay. I think that we are in a unique position, because we have three candidates that, that were right. They, they are all exceptionally great. Here's what I would say. I think that an outside perspective is sometimes a really healthy thing, because sometimes we just get so tunnel-visioned in where we are at, that it would be nice to have a fresh set of eyes that comes in that hasn't been here, who says, hey, this is what I see, this is how we could improve some things, this is what's worked in other districts that are, you know, have gone through comparable things as what you're going through right now. Dr. Schiller brought with him a ton of research. He did a ton of upfront work, and for me, I appreciate that, because he came in knowing our district. He wasn't blind to it. And I know that, you know, obviously, Dr. Rendell has that experience too, so he's, he knows what's going on as well. For me, again, I just, I like all three of them. I think they are all exceptional men. I think that all three of them will be successful wherever they're at. That's a good thing, right? Like, even though, whatever decision we make, we know that those three men will succeed somewhere, whether it's here, we're deciding that now or somewhere else. For me, I just keep going back to the fact that we are hiring for an interim, and if we hire an interim that could potentially transition to a permanent, I think, Mr. Susan, you were the one that mentioned this, I think, that you were, you were concerned with us opening that up. And I think I even advocated at that point, saying, hey, if they're doing an exceptional job, why would we not at least make that option available to them? So, but when Dr. Schiller talks to you and explains these things, and I think, Mr. Gibbs, you've explained it as well, it will limit further applicants from applying, because they're not gonna put their name out there, knowing, hey, they may have someone that's gonna stay permanently, and I understand that. So I just think that Dr. Schiller has what it's, what it's gonna take to get us on the right track right now, and he has a fresh perspective and a ton of experience. I, I will say, you know, the only negative I would say, and I think, Jean, you kind of hit on it a little bit, is his ability to answer a question before it was asked. I think we all saw that yesterday. We were going, wait, wait a minute, what are we gonna ask him next? He's already answered it. So, you know, I, I think that's the only negative, but again, having done what he's done, he knows the questions that are gonna be asked, which is why he's able to offer those answers before the question is even asked. And sometimes he was kind of telling us the answers to questions we should be asking and maybe didn't. You know what I mean? So, it is true. So, I just, I just go back to, I think he has what it takes for this interim position to really get us back on track and, and get us moving in the right direction. So for that reason, that's, that's really why I'm standing behind that decision.
You know, I think he did that, because he's, he's been the one who's hired the people so many times.
He did. And, so...
Maybe interviewer.
Right, right. So I, I kinda, I mean, I can continue to make arguments on both sides and everything else, but I think what I'm hearing you guys say is there's a majority that would like to go on with Mr. Schiller, right? Is that pretty, pretty consistent?
Because again, like, we can only have these conversations in this forum.
I know.
And there's no point of hashing this conversation back out in the future. So, I would like the opportunity just to say some things about some things that were said, because I think it's, I think it's important, because it's, I think it's necessary for moving forward. So saying that we don't believe that we're at, like, at that certain point, that honestly, that is one of my biggest concerns, is that we have board members who don't even acknowledge where we actually are. Because I haven't met a person who tells me that we don't feel like we're there. We don't feel like we're fragmented. We don't feel like our cabinet's hanging on by a string, or some of the people at the district. I mean, guys, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm walking through the halls and people are whispering like, thank you for having me. Because they're uncomfortable with what's happening. Whether or not they agree with the decision at the top is made, they may, some of them may, but they're still uncomfortable with where we're going. It's unpredictable. And so I encourage you to have those conversations with people, blatantly ask them, let them feel comfortable to tell you the truth. They may agree with you, but they still may feel uncomfortable with where we're heading. And I encourage you to have one-on-one connections with our cabinet members, if you haven't already. I'm assuming, maybe you have. We haven't had much. So sorry if you have. I'm making an assumption, but, but I encourage you, because it's really critical to understand the pulse of what's going on at the top of our district, because they're the glue that's holding us together. I mean, yeah, the superintendent leads them, but they're the people who are really making those day-to-day major decisions and presenting it to the superintendent. They're so important to our district. They're all amazing people. Have a pulse with them, please, if you haven't already. And I just, I appreciate the, the tunnel-vision comment. I appreciate that, because I think that's exactly what Mr. Schuler will provide us, is the opportunity to just like, take a step back for a minute, and to calm down and get the train back on the track. So, thank you. I just, I don't want to hash this stuff out later on for no reason, so.
Mr. Susan?
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins.
One second.
Yeah, Mr. Trent.
Maybe some people here at District should feel uncomfortable. We had, we had quite a year in our campaigning. We had three elections. Our community has spoken. All right? I'm just not letting this go without a comment. There is things that need to be changed, and that's, that's okay. When the outside is getting involved and the inside's uncomfortable, that means we're doing our job. That doesn't mean it's gonna change the outcome. That just means we're bringing in the stakeholders. I fully support Dr. Schiller for the interim of Broward County. He did call us Broward County. That's a concern moving forward. Might have been an accident. But it just goes back to, we're missing an opportunity to get somebody that understands Brevard County, has taught, has been a principal, has had the outside perspective that we were also looking for. I, I don't think a linear progression of a career is, is always the best. Mr. Larson pointed that out. So, yes, we've had one-on-ones, we have some wonderful individual people, but here again, we've wanted change, shakeup. You've seen that it's needed. We've been asked by our teachers, our staff, our IAs, our parents, please do something. And I'm not, I'm not gonna stop saying that we've had an opportunity to do something here. And my fear is, we're going to have an overseer for months, is a wonderful person, but, an overseer, and we're gonna have to start over again when this new superintendent comes in here.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. Thank you, Mr. Trent. I think we have a majority that want.
I, I would like to follow up again because I think it's.
Ms. Jenkins, I would just like to just let that go.
No, no, sir.
We need to move ahead.
No, sir.
If we can, if we can just move on.
No, sir.
I'm, I'm actually the board chair.
No, I understand you're the chair, Mr. Susan, but this is the only opportunity.
Ms. Jenkins, can I just speak?
This is the only opportunity for us to have this conversation in the sunshine.
Ms. Jenkins, we can have a back and forth about where we're at in the district.
Mr. Susan, it's ironic that I am the only person that you try to quiet.
Ms. Jenkins, and the board chair.
I understand you're the chair, Mr. Susan. Okay, go ahead and explain it.
Can you please wait to be called on?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Looks like we have a majority of people that want Mr. Schiffern, so what I would like to say.
Schiller.
So, Schiller, sorry. Listen, I apologize.
We're concerned about Brevard and Broward, but we can't remember the names.
Now, what it is, is that I was out last night until 1:00 in the morning with my son. I took him to Disney World. So we had the Disney conversation, so I'm just a little bit tired today. So, I did want to tell you guys, I think that's the direction that the board wants to go. I'll, I'll be honest with you, he's a, he is very qualified to do what he's about to do. I was even last night with my wife going back and forth about where the decision would be made, you know what I mean? And he was the top two. And I was sitting there going back and forth, so I think we're in a good place. I appreciate everybody's comments. Like I think that we all feel comfortable with amounting what our comments are going to be. Ms. Wright, I really appreciate where you're coming from. I appreciate some people were willing to, on one topic or another, decide, hey, I might not have been right about that before, but now this is the direction. So I think we're moving together in a good direction, and I think I just wanted to say thank you for that. I did want to say that it does sort of take a motion to, to hire the next person, so if you guys want to, you know, somebody wants to make a motion to hire him, and then we can go back to Ms. Jenkins' conversation afterwards.
I'll make the motion to, to hire Mr. Schiller as the interim superintendent. Second.
All in favor of, oh yeah, I mean, does anybody have any further discussion about Mr. Schiller?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Okay, Mr. Trent?
Is, we said from the beginning of today, our district will be better off tomorrow with any one of the three. I've heard all the positives of why we're moving, we're moving. And I meant what I said, is we will be better off. Okay? Doesn't matter if I felt personally that I think our district would better, be better off. I know it's not a personal issue, so I'm publicly stating it, not any one board member's position that I will now attack because they didn't vote or pick my person. I'm not going to do that up here, I'm not going to do it online, because I think we had all three good candidates. And I don't care how we've come to this decision, it's, it's, it's going to stay here. And, and that's how we get this board moving forward, even though I think we could have done it differently. But that's just how we need to do. We're going to be making lots of decisions like this. And I'm not going to continue this conversation on why we picked a certain person after this. And I'm hoping we all do the same thing.
Yeah, and that's the appropriate way to go about doing it, Mr. Trent, is that once we make a decision, we can do that. Ms., Ms. Campbell?
Yeah. You know, I, we have a clear direction of, of the majority are about to take a vote. I, I would suggest, and, you know, I'm not your mom, I can't tell anybody what to do, but I would suggest that it would be a good gesture to start this off by giving a unanimous vote.
Yep.
To present to the community that whatever disagreements we may have had and different perspectives we may have had, that, you know, we're, we're moving together, I'm just going to off of that up as a, as a suggestion, an encouragement.
Ms. Jenkins, anything about that you'd like to speak to?
Nope.
All right. So when Dr. Mullins got hired, they made a motion to hire him ahead of interviewing everybody, which I thought was disingenuous at the time, so I voted against it. And then I had another vote where they said, would you like to revote that and vote together unanimously? So what I would like to do is, is exactly what Ms. Campbell said, but we can go both directions, you know what I mean? So.
I'm not, I'm not following what you're saying, sorry.
If you are very positive about not voting for, for one or the other, there's the opportunity to show that, but then come back as a unanimous vote too. That's all I wanted to say. So we have a call to vote, all those in favor of Mr. Schiller signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Nay. For Trent? Okay.
You, you looked at me as a nay, and I said, no, I'm not voting nay. I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. So, Mr. Trent said, so we have a 5-0 vote for Mr. Schiller. I oppose that, I, within about 30 seconds, all of our phones will start ringing. And, um, good luck, Dr. Thede.
One-on-ones over Christmas.
I'm gonna, I had, I had called all the candidates ahead of time, and I think I'm going to forward your phone number to Mr. Schiller right now so that he can get started because that's what he wanted to do.
Could I, could I say something to that? And I want to just, I want to let you know that, one of the things that Mr. Schiller said during the interview process, which I thought was very, very good, and I want to, I want to commend you on this, because he said, I was on the fence, honestly, on this. He said, I hadn't really heard anything except for, hey, here's your interview time. I think Mr. Gibbs had made, you know, minimal contact, communication. And then he said he received a message from the chair, and that was what pushed him over and said, you know what, I'm going to go and help this district. And so I just want to commend you on reaching out to him because that personal touch really did make a difference, and in this case, I think it's going to make a huge difference for our district.
Yeah, he, and, and just so now that we can talk about it, I was in a conversation with him wrapped around political theory and everything else, and we were going back and forth because intellectually, you don't get stimulated too much in those regards in some areas in our world, right? And I said, man, you could rewrite your entire, I mean, you could get hired by any governor inside the state of, in the country to restructure their health systems. You've rewritten 40 or 50 of these things. What is it that you're doing here, man? Like, why are you here, coming here to Brevard? And what's the gig? And he said, I want one last run. That's what he said. He says, I want to be able to do this one last time, and I want to show that I, and I think that's, when you see that inside that person, that's what was running. So I'm happy that everybody had the conversations. Ms. Campbell?
Do you have a point of discussion that I would like to bring up?
I have one too, so go ahead.
Okay, okay.
Are we done with Sch, with him?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I do have something on him. Who, who, are you going to be my contact to negotiate his contract details?
Yeah, I'll negotiate it, like I, that's appropriate.
And so I wanted to bring a recommendation, I think, we wouldn't be able to vote on it today, but in the past, when we have had a staff member step up to fill in an empty role, especially if they were continuing to serve in their, their current role, we have recognized that with a bonus or a stipend of some sort. So I would recommend that we recognize Dr. Thede for her time. I mean, she is the deputy superintendent, but usually what that entails is, you know, if the superintendent was out, she filled in for a meeting. But in this case, there is not a single thing that she's let drop with HR, and in addition, she's had to do this. So I would recommend that we, that we recognize and honor that time of filling in as basically acting superintendent with monetary bonus of some kind. Is that where you were going?
So, so I, I, no, that, I had something else I wanted to talk to you guys about, but I did want to say, have you talked to Dr. Thede about that? Because I have a feeling that she will be like, no, I don't want that.
I, you know, because we're not supposed to have surprises.
And there was a reason for it, not because she's there, but I just, I, there's, because I have been saying the same thing for Tammy, because she's been covering too since February. I also have been saying the same thing about the transportation guys that have been driving the buses and stuff like that, so, hey, I'm all about it, let's roll. Like, let's start adding it to it.
So I did, because, you know, it's not good practice to surprise people in the dais, and especially not to surprise Dr. Thede. So I did talk to her right before the meeting, I mean, she's not the boss of me, so she can't tell me not to bring it up. So, no, I did, I did mention, talk to her about it. I also asked Dr. Gibb, uh, Dr. Gibbs, Mr. Gibbs, to see if there was anything that we need. He suggested that maybe if, if the board had a consensus that they would bring something forward for us to officially vote on, on, on Tuesday. But I don't know if anybody else has similar thoughts.
I like the idea. I'd also like to do it for Tammy, who's been doing it. And then I would also like to have that conversation in January about some of the other people that have been doing the same thing. So I'm all in favor.
I do have a memo that Tammy just gave me from Dr. Mullins suggesting the same thing. If there's consensus, it is within Dr. Mullins' ability to pay and authorize that, so I can have Mr. Susan sign approving the consensus.
I won't sign a darn thing unless she takes care of Tammy too.
Yeah, have we, have we ever overcompensated Tammy for the fact that she stepped in and became our secretary?
I've been asking for it since Escobar left.
Yeah, I mean, it's insanity, because she's literally doing two jobs at the exact same time.
For a year.
So do Mullins and Tammy, right? And then we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Thede, he's got names on his, golly. What day is it? Where are you at right now?
More coffee.
All right, so that's good, sounds good. Anything else?
Do we have an amount? Are we going to let Dr. Mullins?
No, we're going to let them do that.
Okay.
All right.
You want to be a little awkward.
The other, oh, well, that's, I mean, he knows the best thing. I mean, if we start throwing out numbers, it's inappropriate.
No, 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 I meant if we were throwing out numbers.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so one of the things that I, I wanted to do is suggest that we, we hired FSBA as our search firm, right? And what I would like to do is have, for the, for the main superintendent, what I'd like to do is on Tuesday, right after we sign real quick, give the opportunity that if you would like, and I would like, to just have them as part of the discussion, tell you some of the things you need to think about over Christmas break. Not, you know, we're going to meet, we're going to discuss it all and everything else, but that way we, there's a lot of conversation here today wrapped around, we're moving pretty quick and everything like that. I didn't want to come back and then say, hey, we got to, you know, so it gives us like three weeks to sit down, digest, and talk about what we really want. FSBA, Ms. Messina said that she would be available if we wanted that. So if you guys wanted to, it would only take 10 minutes, she would just get up there and say it. And then that way we can at least plan on what we really want to do inside the room. What's that?
I said, let's let them start earning their money.
Yeah.
So, we don't have it published yet, so the agenda for Tuesday will be.
It can just be a board discussion.
Approving the contract for Dr. Schiller and having a discussion with FSBA.
Yeah, and it can just be on the board discussion.
Didn't have anything else on there that we had to, as far as the process?
We, we, when we, when we advertised, it was for interim selection and a selection of a, a search firm. So it was advertised as such, so it would be appropriate if you wanted to. I know at the prior, at Tuesday's meeting, there was discussion of moving that to the New Year, but if you guys just want to have a, an informal conversation with them on what the board's kind of looking for, so they can structure something to bring back to the board maybe in the New Year.
I just want to really realize we're not going to have a break because Mr. Schiller is going to be calling us. I'm kind of like afraid, why did I use my, oh, man?
I have a question about the present, or FSBA coming here on Tuesday, because technically we didn't vote to hire them yet, right?
The contract has not come, the board selected that, it's, yeah, so, but the contract is going to be dependent on what the board wants. So if you're adding stuff on, their contract is actually under the school board's need to vote. So Dr. Thede could sign that contract, because with the maximum add-ons to that contract, the total came to 49.5. That's in the superintendent authority, which Dr. Thede's wielding for the board right now.
So.
Unless you're adding additional costs on there. So if you say, hey, we really want you to add five community meetings around the district, and they say, well, that's going to add, you know, $2,000 to it, now you're over that threshold, and we'd have to bring that contract to the board.
Right, which I think is part of the conversation.
So, hold on, I'm, I'm not finished. So I just want to throw this back at you guys. I was cautious about this conversation we had about who we were selecting already because I think it's, I think it's a little bit rushed to not have the top two come back and present to us a full package, a full presentation of their plan and what they're going to do. Because one of the things lacking on FSBA's side was actually explicitly telling us how they would engage the community. And that increase from $35,000 to $49,000 already happened overnight without us even having a conversation about community engagement. I think we need to do our due diligence and just make sure that we're comfortable with it, know what it's going to cost us, number one, but also make sure we're comfortable with the process as well. Because that's a huge jump, like overnight, and it's not even including community involvement.
If I can just clarify that, it didn't jump, it was in their proposal.
It was.
We, to do the contract language, we assumed that at the maximum level that they proposed, it would not exceed 49.5. So procurement's proceeding with a not-to-exceed contract.
Okay.
So we, we took all their numbers and built it in, they were very upfront. It could be as little as 35 or as much as 49.5, if we took the maximum of every package that they did, yeah, based on what this board wants.
But, so just to clarify for me, I'm not finished, Mr. Susan, so just to clarify for me, those packages though did not include the community events, other than facilitating a conversation.
Off the top, I don't remember what it all was. I know you did comment that they didn't.
Yeah, and so I think it's important for us to have that conversation because we don't, we don't know what that looks like. I mean, that's not, that's not good due diligence for us to be like, full-fledged, let's do this, and have no idea what we're walking into. I think that's a bad idea. I think we need to talk about that.
So everything that was inside of there that he just spoke of, travel for them, covering the cost of applicants, all of those different things is inside of there. There's many components to what we're about to do, and community involvement, I mean, FSBA has done, you saw all the ones in the state of Florida that they've done. So it's not, it, what, what it is with these search firms is the same thing as any other firm, is you say, this is what we would like. They would take the package that they had over here, put it in, then they take this package over here, put it in, devise it, and then they set it. It's not like we're going to be creating something that's completely outside the box. They did a max of 49.5, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to have the conversation with them. I would go against making two people fly here to have a presentation when we already set direction that this was the one we were going to select on top. And I think that I have full confidence that FSBA would be able to do it. So that's why I was asking if you guys wanted to be able to see it. That's all.
I'm not, I'm not judging their inability to do it. There's no reason to be defensive about it, I'm not saying that. It is our due diligence to be clear about the direction going forward and, and know what we're walking into. That's all I'm asking. And I understand how the process works. I know that they've done this before, and they're going to pull packages from one place that they've done somewhere and present it to us. I understand that completely, but they have not done that yet. Their initial offer to us did not lay out how they would do community engagement. And the way one district is structured versus another will impact costs, will impact the amount of staff that they have to send here. And so I think it's the right thing to do to at least ask. It's not to say that we're not going to hire them by any means, but we absolutely need to know what we're walking into before we move forward. That makes no sense at all.
Well, what we did was we set direction that we were going to choose FSBA, okay? And what I did was I said, let's have a conversation wrapped around what we should be working for moving forward. You know, and we, we had had wrapped around conversation about FSBA was the best fit because of X, Y, and Z. That was, they work inside the state of Florida, they have the best connections there, the other ones had one reason or another that they weren't. We had that discussion. We set the direction that we were going to move with FSBA. I would like to have the conversation wrapped around what we can do to prepare for next year, so that's all.
I, I think that maybe what they lacked was maybe a more, they weren't necessarily[1627.38] I, I think that maybe what they lacked was maybe a more, they weren't necessarily the most explicit, laying out how they were going to do it. I don't think that means they don't do it or that it's going to cost us extra. And it probably would be good just for, to feel comfortable with maybe calling, contacting some of the districts that have most recently used them and ask them, what did this look like in your district? And obviously it's going to look different. I think that's, maybe that's one of the reasons why they didn't explicitly lay it out because it is different in when they worked with Orange as it would have been if they worked in, I'm just going, you know, Escambia. So, but it would probably, there's a list of people that, you know, if you contact, you know, call those, I think we need to make contact with those other districts and just find out. So we feel comfortable, but are we vote, so we don't have to vote on that, you said, because it's under 50?
Right.
Okay. Well, I think it'd be good to have them, have this initial conversation with them on Tuesday and make very clear, we want to know.
Right, and that's my intention. If they're coming Tuesday, this is why I'm asking.
They're not going to come, they're going to be virtual.
Whatever. If they're, they're with us some way or the other Tuesday, we, I think it's okay for us to ask them to come back and tell us what they would do. I mean, I don't think that's a weird thing to ask them. If we know they're coming Tuesday already, let's just ask them to tell us how they could fill in the gaps there because it wasn't presented in the initial, in the initial plan.
And what I would say is, is that I'm going to give them direction to listen, to kind of give us the overview of what is exactly needed in a search, right? Then we can say exactly like what you were saying, Ms. Jenkins, is this is what we feel from our community. And then we can, and they can, be going back to formulate a plan and come back exactly like what you're saying, Ms. Jenkins, is to make sure that we're in dovetail. Because I have a feeling that that's going to take maybe more than one meeting because we're going to be going back and forth. And that's why I wanted us to have enough time to present before that. That's all. All right? We're okay with that?
Yeah.
All right? Is everybody else, anybody else have any other items?
Yeah, one question on that. I don't know if it's possible, the screen in the superintendent's conference room, would we rather have like a Teams thing where we can see Andrea?
Exactly.
If possible, that might be a Rust, Cheatham question, but if we can set it up.
We've done it, yeah, it's a great point, Mr. Gibbs. What I, from my limited knowledge, we had a redistricting where we'd had that one time, where we brought that screen in here. We have like six of them in the building.
Yeah, there's one right in there.
So the idea would be that we put it there and we can communicate, but I think it just, it behooves us to kind of start that process of understanding, so. Everybody else has any other?
And, one more on that, because I just got a question from procurement on this contract. Do they structure their pay a little different? They usually do one-third, one-third, one-third. Is the board good with that? Or would you rather have all services rendered than pay at the end?
Oh, I'd rather third, getting paid as they're traveling.
Okay.
That's just me, though. I don't speak for all of you guys.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Cover costs.
Looks like you got a majority there.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Anything else for the good of the board? All right, we're done. Thank you.